Let's see, I think we're ready. If, you know, or we would ask all the candidates except for Stanley Peeks, y'all would follow Sarah here please? Thank you. And Mr. Biggs if you will come up and get you a seat right here. Uh, okay, our first candidate is Stan or Stanley?
About Stan is mine.
Stan Digs. And Mr. Biggs if you will just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. Stan Digs, I'm a product of public school in South Carolina. I graduated there in nineteen eighty-three and the faculty and staff gave me an opportunity. The auditions that I needed to go out to achieve the things that I wanted to achieve. To prosper, to improve my education, taught me about charity. From there, three days on the graduation, I joined the US Marine Corps. And the reason I joined the Marine Corps is basically to serve my country and also to be a part of some
We're sorry, we're making sure that everybody can hear.
Okay.
And I apologize.
I graduated, uh, three days of post graduation, I went to the Marine Corps. And I went from Marine Corps and I wanted to serve my country. Also I wanted to be independent and also to pay for my own education. I know the Marine Corps VA had programs that sponsored a better education. Took one of my six and a half years in the Marine Corps, took classes, corresponding classes. I went to different duty stations, I had to duty station, I attended night classes throughout my whole years. I graduated with my bachelor's degree at Wilmington University in nineteen ninety-eight in Delaware. From there, I went on to get my second MBA at the University of Delaware. I had the opportunity, uh, with my wife, to go to Luxembourg for twelve years and we just repatriated in April. And that was a great experience to, for me as an American to live abroad and to deal with a multicultural environment. Talking about dealing with French, German, Dutch, Italians. And you had to be efficient and get your job, uh, dealing with multiple people with multiple different cultures. Uh, it, and my background, uh, from education, my background from the Marine Corps really put me in a position to be successful during my twelve years in Luxembourg. But I wanted to come back home, uh, my wife and I were getting some due diligence and we chose Chapel Hill to be our home. Uh, one of the key reasons is that the environment, the culture, North Carolina's a great place to be. The people, a lot of things to do, uh, and thank my wife, we made a great decision to move here. One of the key reasons I wanted to come here too is also to get back into my charity and to volunteer. I'm a mentor at the Communities and Schools Program in Chatham County. I just have my first mentee, I've been working with him for about almost two months now. It really gave me a sense of worth and a sense of pride. So I now have an opportunity to go back and give something to other people to let them know that, you know, public schools, this institution is a great place. You should have faculty, you have staff, you know, people, they not come here for the money, they come here because of the love of education. And the love of having students and to make them, make sure they can prosper. Make sure they have the necessary tools, social tools, to go out, continue their education, to work, and also more importantly, to be a good citizen. Uh, from that point, uh, I'm here, uh, I had a friend that called, uh, an associate that called me and asked me to apply. I, I didn't really know how to take it, but it was a positive thing. And after doing my research the past couple of weeks, it would be an honor to be on the board. I think because of my drive, my advocacy for education, being a good citizen, and making sure that all students have what they need to go out, mostly here, to be prosperous, to be independent, and to be a good citizen.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll start you off and you can kind of answer part of my first question, sir, that's okay?
Yes.
Two-part question. Why do you want to be a school board member? I think you answered that partly anyway. And is there something in particular you would go, you would look forward to accomplish?
I would like to be a board member. Uh, based on the research that I've done and the surveys that I've read about teachers. One, one in particular where the teachers have one, one hundred percent confidence in the leadership of the board. And that's, to me, that says a lot about the job that you're doing and also the superintendent, Dr. Jackson. And it would allow me to get back to my charity, what I wanted to do, to volunteer, to help form and to help students to achieve the great things in life. And I think, and part two is what I want to achieve. I have a lot of knowledge and technology, uh, and how to deal with multicultural environment. I think my, my experience abroad, uh, my military experience would give me the tools to work with you, the members, and, and to provide a solid basic education for all students to make sure they have what they need to prosper and to move forward in life, wherever this, wherever they decide.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Biggs. Thank you for applying. Right, so my question is, given the current makeup of the Board of Education, what would your particular set of skills bring to the table and why are they important?
I think my leadership skills, uh, would be a great thing to, to, to the board. I know you have a lot of, uh, I read all your nine different policy, policies, dealing with, uh, you know, students, faculty, and how can I leverage my, my leadership skills and helping you to attain your goals? Wanting to keep those and make sure that every student has a sound, uh, sound, uh, positive education, good bits on education for the schools. And where I can achieve that is to work with you, understand the policy, understand the system, and to supporting, uh, the superintendent and his staff to make sure that every student, all students, have what they need to move forward and, uh, mostly lead and help some citizens.
I'm next.
Hey.
Thank you for applying and showing interest. Since you've already told us that we're doing a great job in the leadership role and all that, um, what do you think is the most, single most critical issue facing Chatham County? If we're doing such a great job, we don't have any critical issues.
I mean, every place is going to have some issues. But I think that the one chap, uh, five years to teach your plan that you could make this year, I think it really sets out your strategy for the next five years, what your plans for, for this year. And then, I mean, five focus areas, five focus areas that you focus on from this, uh, curriculum innovation, student health and safety, faculty and staff. You have, uh, communications, uh, and sharing information. Those things that you have and that strategy is gonna, it would help put you even higher in other districts in, in state. Uh, I know right now, teacher shortage is a major issue in some districts across the state. But I think from my reading, I think the last, what I saw, thirty-five, that's one of the lowest numbers across, across the state. I think, uh, going forward, that may be an issue. So I think maybe some, where, where can we, uh, strategy, I'd say, make sure we have enough teachers, to make sure we have our students covered in their education. That's one of the areas that I think could be across the board, not just in districts, but across the, uh, state.
Thank you, I'm next, and I'm Jane Allen Wilson, and welcome, and I also reiterate gratitude that you've applied. Um, and so my question that I have for you is to, uh, briefly describe your involvement with what schools in Chatham County or elsewhere? And what work have you already done that has prepared you for a position on the school board? So as specific as possible.
Okay, and directly with school boards, I haven't had any direct.
I think it's with schools in general.
Oh, schools, schools in general, okay, schools in general. I go back to my, my public high school days. Just the, the, the attention, uh, the care, the facility and staff offered me. And as being a public student, that they gave me the encouragement to continue with my education. That was, that's what, and across the board from my high school days. All my, my teachers, my coaches, they kept encouraging me, my counselor, whatever you do, Sam, is continue with your education. And that's one thing that ran, ran forward, uh, this, that really helped me to move forward in my life. And it's so important to make sure that all students have the same opportunity, the same support that I had at school. And continue to educate is a lifelong learning, uh, focus. At my undergrad school and went to university, the same thing, I had great professors. And going through my second MBA program at University of Delaware, always, education is key. Education is the foundation for you to build on and you can carry it for the rest of your life. And from that perspective, I want to maybe give public school students, all public school students, as what did I get? That's a, that's a young adult, and that's a, that's a, you need to fit in to school level. But hey, you can be anything you want to be in life, but you need to have a good solid education. On top of that, you need to be a good citizen. But, you know, and have good social skills, be open minded, accept different cultures, accept people who's a different view. But still, basics, you need a good solid education to really move forward and have a prosperous life.
All right, our last question, Mr. Biggs. Will you be able to make the commitment necessary to fulfill the duties of a school board member? And basically in other words, is your daytime job requiring you to miss meetings and, uh, be like, you know, have trouble being, meeting such type of things?
I am retired. And I set my own schedule and right now I have a lot of time to dedicate to, uh, to, I would have a lot of time to dedicate to the board. I do have a certain holidays I go through a minute a year, but if I can't be here physically, I can do it virtually or by audio. But I'm making a commitment to make sure I support the board and be here and to help the team. Or, especially with, uh, Chatham one, our year's student plans and supporting the school facilities and make sure they're number one in the state.
Okay, is there anything else you want to tell us? We still got a minute or two here, anything else you need us to add?
I know, I, it's, it's just a really, uh, pleasure to be here. This, this will be an opportunity to really give more back to, to my, to my country and now to my state and to my county. And just to my focus would be on to make sure every student have the opportunity for a good solid education and have support that they need to move forward in life, whatever decision, whatever role, whatever role they choose to go. They have the necessary tools to move forward. So for, uh, Chatham, uh, school board, I know that's a fantastic job. Let's find ways to keep that going, uh, with technology, different types of things we can do to make sure that we have a top school in the state.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And if you'll follow, uh, this, this Sarah, there's my wife, she'll share your word with you. Thank you, thank you. Is it time line, we were okay there?
Yes, sir. I'm finished with the last two minutes, but.
Okay, okay.
Do you want me to give you any reference forms or anything?
Um, when we get to five, that'll be, yeah, five minutes, uh, not five minutes, after we view on the intro. Uh, if we're running past the intro, more than five, just go back and then, um, move us forward.
I'll give you.
Other than that one.
At the end I'll give you, you have thirty-five, wait one.
Might need some animation music, Jeffrey. Sing, no, no, that will shut it later. Break the silence.
It's a little, compared to what's said and what you, what we read before, just kind of look at it in context.
I'm sorry, Ms. Brightenstein, just, am I pronouncing that right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our next candidate is Julie Brightenstein, and we just appreciate you so much and taking the time to fill out the paperwork and, uh, come in for an opportunity to help Chatham County Schools. We appreciate all this. If we, we can, we'll just open up, uh, with just a brief introduction, three, five minutes. Uh, tell us about yourself, what you want us to know, and then we'll each ask a, a question, and I'll ask one of you five questions. Okay?
Okay. Um, I am an attorney, I was licensed first in two thousand and five. I started my career in Colorado as a public defender. Um, following a little over five years, I moved to Nebraska with my husband. And I opened my own law practice in Nebraska. Um, I focused on indigenous defense cases, um, for adults and juveniles. I also worked as a guardian and item for the court in abuse and neglect proceedings and representing parents in abuse and neglect proceedings. We relocated with our family to North Carolina in twenty thirteen. I moved to Chatham County in twenty fourteen, been in the same house since then. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, I started a position up in North Carolina Innocence and Prejudice Commission. It is the only state-run agency in the country that works to investigate post-conviction claims of innocence. And as one of the attorneys, I would be assigned to a case and investigated fully. If I found evidence of actual innocence, there was a process with the commission where we present the case, if the commissioners, um, made certain findings, it could move forward to a three-judge panel. And the end result was that people could be exonerated and declared innocent. I recently switched to the North Carolina Prisoner Legal Services in Raleigh, it's a nonprofit. I represent incarcerated people in North Carolina. Um, they have a contract with IDAs, which is Indigenous Defense Services. I receive funding from them to represent prisoners on post-conviction claims, which can vary, um, different claims can be raised. Um, personally, I mentioned I'm married to Diego, he's a professor at UNC. I have two daughters and they are six and ten, well, almost ten, she's still nine. But they're in fourth grade and kindergarten at Chatham.
Thank you, all right. Uh, my question is, why do you want to be a school member? And is there something in particular you want the board to accomplish?
I described a pretty lengthy background in criminal justice. And one thing that has become abundantly clear to me, and it became clear early on, my clients have said, when you get to the criminal justice system, you see a lot of educational efficiencies. Um, it was rare for me to have clients who had any kind of college education courses. It was very common to represent people throughout. If you look at the reading levels for incarcerated people in general, they estimate that seventy percent are only reading at a fourth grade level. Um, something else that is also clear is when you look at the background people becoming to the criminal justice system, they've experienced multiple adverse childhood, um, experiences or events. And I think that what I've realized is that the way to combat issues like this that happen later in society, um, is to focus more on public schools and to focus early on. That's the time when you can truly make a difference. You talk about increasing the rate of high school graduation, and it sounds great because it's good for society. We all know we want more high school graduates. But you are much less likely to be incarcerated in your lifetime if you graduate from school. So that's one of the reasons why we should focus on things like that, trying to improve the education, not just the academic side, but the whole child, the socially, emotional well-being of children. Um, trying to help those who need help, not just in the classroom, but who might be having problems.
Good evening, Ms. Brightenstein, my name is Del Turner, and my question for you is, given the current makeup of the Board of Education, what would your particular set of skills bring to the table and why are they important?
Um, I think I bring a different perspective. Um, I am an attorney and so I'm comfortable with analyzing statutes and laws. I understand that you are, um, controlled by them and you always have to follow them. Um, I have been in jobs before where we talked about passing decisions, I'm comfortable with that. Um, I am the type of person where I always like to be very prepared before, um, I make a decision in a case or anything that I'm dealing with. And so for me, it's really important to make sure, um, that you're basing decisions on evidence and experience.
I'm next, I'm still writing. We, we do such a great job here, we, there's, there's nothing that we have to fix, not now. Um, what do you think is the single most critical issue that's facing us right now?
That is hard to think of.
Uh, uh, there's not a list of big ones, so it's only one.
Okay, okay. Um, I think, well, given what has happened over the last two years, there's a learning loss that all children are experiencing. It's not just in Chatham County, but it is around the country, it's probably even worldwide. So, um, that's a unique challenge, and I think that's probably the most pressing. Obviously, things come with that, you know, teacher retention and that, but I think you said the single most, so that's what I would say.
Um, so, hello and welcome, thank you for applying and being interested in serving. Um, I'm Jane Allen Wilson, and my question here is, briefly describe your involvement with public schools in Chatham County or elsewhere? And what, what work have you already done that has prepared you for a position on the school board?
Um, well, in terms of schools in Chatham County, it has been with my children, volunteering in the classroom, things of that nature. I remember the PTA. In my career, it wasn't necessarily frequent that my cases would cross paths with schools, but of course, the school system sometimes is involved in criminal matters. And I mentioned before, I was a guardian item, and that was probably the most frequent, was when I represented juveniles who were charged with crimes, and also when I was a guardian item representing children who were, uh, involved in abuse and neglect proceedings. I think I was doing a job as a guardian item unless I reached out to the teacher to ask what was going on and how the child was doing. We'd turn it out to the principal. Uh, so I had a lot of contact with schools for that.
Okay, um, will you be able to make the commitment necessary to fulfill the duties of a school board member? And basically, would your daytime job get in the way of you being at the meetings or being in line?
Or being late.
Be in line, yeah.
I have a very flexible job right now, I'm part-time, I don't know if it's going to stay. So I'm able to work from home about three days a week. I, I choose to go a little bit more than that, but I can work from home at least three days a week. There are many people in my office who have commitments to public service things outside, and my boss is very understanding. Um, yes, I can fully commit to them, and I also have a husband who's very supportive as well. And when I say I have a flexible schedule, it means, you know, I, I can flex my hours, so I think you're there in there.
Well, we've got a little more time, is there anything else that you'd like to tell us that we have else in particular?
Just a very familiar one, Chatham, I promise you guys have put together what the school system is doing. I was very impressed, and I think that it is, um, taking schools in a very good direction. I appreciate that you had identified five different areas, not just focusing on academics or curriculum, um, focusing on basically the whole child. And, um, I think other challenges that are facing Chatham County are pretty obvious to me. People live in Chatham County, which is that this county is growing and feels like at an exponential rate. And so I think that a, a good board member is able to work with community and understand what people in schools who actually work in the schools, um, want to see happen and what they need and anticipate that. I also think you can learn from other counties, whether they've had poor responses to growth or whether they've done well. Um, so, I, I would also like to point out that I think that teacher retention is extremely important and teacher pay. If I could, I would give all teachers, any trainees without the bad, includes staff and administration as well. Um, but I think that should always be a focus of the school board. Because I know what it is like to do a humble, amateur job because you love it. And I know what it's like to also feel like you don't necessarily get paid for the work that you do.
Thank you, I appreciate your time, have a good day. This is Henry Calderon. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that correct. And Mr. Calderon, thank you so much for taking the time to fill out everything and the interest in our public school system and, of course, just for being here tonight. We'll open it up for about forty-five minutes. You can just tell us what anything you need us to hear, and then we'll each ask a question. I'll ask a final one.
Yeah, my name is Henry Calderon. I was not born in this community. I was born in the Republic, came to the U.S. early eighties in New York, like most of our communities. I moved to Boston in the late eighties, where I went to attend the middle school, high school, joined the National Guard there. Went to college for an M.A. there, met my wife there. Then ventured to several locations throughout the U.S. My son is born, my oldest son is born in Miami. I have two other kids who are all in the Chatham public school systems. One's at C-4, color, North Chatham, all that. Right now, I'm doing all the paperwork. My wife's in Boston. I've been in the research space for over twenty years. I've worked in academia and in industry. More recently, I'm more of a consulting role in the space, but I also have a startup medical device that I'm trying to get off the ground. Company that I'm trying to get off the ground now. And we moved from Boston about thirteen, fourteen months ago, and eleven since.
Thank you. All right. Why do you want to be a school board member? And is there something in particular that you would want the board to accomplish?
Yeah, absolutely. So I've, serving my community is something that's been important to my family, my wife and I, particularly both of you, as I mentioned. While in Boston, I served in several nonprofit organizations, including LocalWise, which is a greater plan, C.A. Corporation, and also a private school called Pike School in Andover, Massachusetts, which is a feeder school to Phillips Academy. Coming from another country, we required, needed a lot of help to kind of help us navigate the system. And I saw how important it was for us to receive that help in order to, you know, make it to where we're in now. And I want to make sure that those opportunities are there for kids that are coming home. Not necessarily just immigrants, but everybody, you know. Also, serving as part of these board, you get to, you know, take part in several committees, including B.E.I.J., Governor's Committee, Strategic Planning, Head of School Surges. So it gives you different appreciation for what has to come together in order to have a successful school or school system, as in this public school system here. So for us, it's important to give back and make sure that we give our, I would say, I don't blame you, but to make sure that we have an opportunity to impact the community where we're thinking of others in the same way that people thought of us.
Welcome, Mr. Calderon. Given the current makeup of the Board of Education, what would your particular set of skills bring to the table and why are they important?
Yeah, this is something that I've been reflecting on quite a bit. You know, I know that being new to Chatham County, I think that, and it's difficult for me to say because I can go in so many different ways, but I think being new to the county, not having that historical component, while that is important, also gives me a fresh perspective because I will look at issues based on what's presented, not on anything that's happened to me that had that sort of stuff. It's also important to make sure that the board continues to be diverse, so that the community that's being, that we're serving is represented in the board. Given that I am Hispanic, also Black, I think, look at certain things with those lenses and see if maybe there's something that's not being considered from that perspective that can perhaps enhance the community. It might be something that might serve the board, and given my experience with that, I think might be helpful. I also have a very strong financial background in my roles at Y, at Pike School, and also in several for-profit boards that I've served. And so those sort of things, I think, are important and crucial, but smaller numbers.
I'm next. There's really no issues facing us in Chatham County, so this is only a hard question. What's the single most critical issue that we need to tackle and face?
Oh, that's a hard question.
The single, single, I didn't ask for a long list, the single.
I don't know much of the historical component of the county. And, but I can tell you that projecting into the future and seeing the explosion that's going to happen here, I think strategic planning is a very good thing to this.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Calderon. Briefly describe your involvement with public schools in Chatham County or elsewhere. And what work have you already done that has prepared you for a position on the school board?
Yeah, absolutely. I think I touched on that a little bit. So here, the way I found out about this position is I was talking to the C-4 new parent association's president. And through several conversations with other folks, because my kids are all play several sports. You know, we contribute financially, we contribute, I was trying to, there's a gap that we uncover where, you know, kids have practice at 5:30. The schools are kicking the kids out, right? So they're roaming, they're doing several things, and I said, well, why can't we start some type of tutoring program or study hall where the kids can have access to it? It'll be in a protected place, and then you can go to their sports. So that's how I've been involved so far. I've been here for thirteen months again. And then we've supported several different, you know, programs and athletics program financially. But I don't know, I've served in every single community that it has offered. I started in front of him, a board member. I was in part of the, I don't know, the Halloween committee. Then I was part of the welcoming committee. Then I went out and helped raise money, financial aid. It was a big issue. We would support them that way. I served in the head of school search. I was co-president of the diversity committee, B.E.I.J. committee. I was in the financial committee. I was in the elastic. I mean, I think I've went through all the different committees that were available, but I was there for thirteen, twelve years. So I was able to impact the community, and that's why I got involved. I said, you know, my wife and I know that it's a partnership between parents and the school in order to have successful experience in school for the kids, and we took that to heart, and we all volunteer. Same thing at Y, you know, we help establish programs for especially for the public. You know, we were in Florida. We were a private school. We had an iPad integrated program. But I know back home, kids struggling in public schools. So we helped set up systems where, you know, we were in private school. We knew we had resources, parents had resources, so we got those parents to donate iPads or computers to public school system for kids that had that was issued with kids didn't have internet, for example, but they were required to attend Zoom calls and do these sort of things. They were able to go and reach out to Comcast and other providers and get them to either reduce rates or free internet for these kids. So I've done a lot of these different programs, broader community things. We've done like puppet training events, some of them kids and I started, where we started using, you know, parents at these facilities that had access to resources to just bring food for kids. A lot of kids didn't have, you know, they couldn't go to school to get their meals. In Lawrence, in North Andover, those surrounding communities, that wasn't as affluent as our community, and we got our meals that way. We also started a program which suddenly ended in COVID called Beyond Basketball. I'm a big basketball fan. I play basketball. I coach basketball. I was part of USA Basketball as a volunteer. And one of the things that we did was use that platform to help and show kids, like, look, you know, everything you learn in court can be translated into every area of your life. So we would bring in professional players, either from the Celtics or from D1 schools or just other players that were slightly ahead, high school players. And they were able to have a conversation with these younger players. It was mainly made up of, you know, Pee Wees or anyone eighth grade and below, and you have those conversations around, this is what teamwork is about. This is all the things you can achieve just being part of a team. So there's different things that we've done from different angles, but all to, you know, make sure we have a community that's striving in a very diverse and fair way.
All right, last question. Will you be able to make the commitment necessary to fulfill the duties of the school board member?
Absolutely. I wouldn't be here if I couldn't. I think I had a conversation with you very briefly, just to try to understand what those commitments were. And I had conversations with other people that have served in this board to see, to give you a real good sense of what that would be like. And after, you know, some days of reflection, I think it was a week before, I mean, the week after I spoke with you on the phone, that I actually went ahead and applied for the vacancy. And I had to understand, given everything that I'm doing, that this was something that I can fully commit to.
All right, Mr. Calderon, you've got just a little bit more time. Is there anything else you would like the board to know about you?
Oh, that can be a long conversation. I don't know. I mean, kids play sports. We have family in Major League Baseball. You know, we're Dominican, small island, related to everybody. Let's see, but we like to do things like go to Disney. We like to see how we can impact each other and make each other better by doing things like, I don't know. My one son, one of my kids wants to put together, he goes to get a 10C for, I don't know what you want to call it, but they want to put together like a Hummer garage in Chapel Hill to a basketball gym, just because there's no access for kids to play. It's getting cold. So I'm challenging, you know, in a way, okay, how are we going to raise the money for that? I can't write a check. How are we going to raise the money? How are we going to put it together? Who's going to take care of it? Who's going to clean it? Is it going to be like a dog? I walk a dog, but it's your dog. Those sort of things. So we like to challenge them in those ways. But in general, we're just here to, you know, go through life, you know, more relaxed, I guess, is what they say down here. First Carolina, it's more relaxed. They're not north. I enjoy it so far. It's been fantastic, so, but I can spend a lot of time on the road.
Mr. Calderon, thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Chris Fields, and Chris, what we'll do is open up and let you tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll ask my questions.
So I moved here about seven weeks ago from Chapel Hill. I did middle school, high school, undergrad, and grad, all in Chapel Hill. We moved here, my wife got a fourth grade teacher position at Woodshark. She previously taught at Estes. And I learned a lot from her perspective on that. She's also taught at Hillsborough Elementary, which is a ground school. And my perspective has grown from that, and I went to Hillbilly Center in the nineties, and I sat in their board as an alumni rep. And I've been in that for about two years, and I've been at their finance community for four years, and I've been involved there in one way or another since about 2004. And I heard the opening here, and I watched some of, I watched one board, the previous one, and I read the minutes of the other ones. It sounded very interesting to me, and I thought of ways I could help. And then I also looked up some of the stats. I work in data analytics and finance, and I found some of the stats interesting. And I knew the stats from Chapel Hill schools, because I grew up there and matured in it too, all good. And then I know them from Woods, because my wife's student taught there when she was in college back in 2000, shortly after it opened. And we live in the neighborhood of Cotton Brian in Chapel Hill. He's the principal at Woods. And I've learned a lot about why that school was so successful, and also I've learned a lot about why Chapel Hill, Carroll City schools are so successful and have matured later. And I've had a family member in those schools ever since I graduated in 2003. And I also have family members in Chatham County schools as well.
Why do you want to be a school board member, and is there something in particular you want the board to accomplish?
I want to be a school board member for more engagement with teachers and also students, and to be advocates for students. And I think finding a way to connect with students and find a way to teach them that suits them the best is a major point in teaching. And having gone to Hillbilly Center, which is a school that teaches support students at a time with learning disabilities or dyslexia, ADD, ADHD. I know a lot about their Hill Wrap program, which they sell around the country, or they sell, they distribute around the country, and that is software and iPad where it's specifically tailored to what learning disability they have. And I feel engaging with those students and teaching them the way they need to be taught is really fruitful. Because I went there in middle school, and I was a very poor student at a elementary school. Spent three years there in middle school, and I really flourished in high school and ended up going to Carolina. And had I not learned how to learn the way I need to be taught, I probably would not have been successful at high school. And everything I've learned, being engaged with Hillbilly Center over the past two decades, I've gained a lot of knowledge. And also my wife, being a teacher, I've gained a lot of knowledge from that perspective as well. For example, she's in fourth grade, and I went to her classroom in Woods, and she has four different types of seats. She has beanbag seats. She has these stools that like wheel. Then she has sensory seats, which are like gel pads and normal seats. And that's for kids that have high sensory needs. And if you're sitting on a seat that's high sensory, you can do your work better because you're going to pay attention to it because you're also getting sensory through your body. So just things like that that I didn't have growing up.
Mr. Fields, given the current makeup of the Board of Education, what would your particular set of skills bring to the table and why are they important? what would your particular set of skills bring to the table, and why are they important?
Uh, very good with looking at numbers, having worked in data analytics, and, uh, I have a master in accounting from Carolina. And I currently have a kindergartner. And my wife being a teacher, I get a lot of feedback from her what works and what doesn't work, and why parent engagement is so important, and why figuring out how that student that may seem like a problem student, look deeper into it, find why is that issue occurring? And then see if you can create an issue and help them learn better in the way that would most suit them.
There's a line from a list of, um, issues that could be facing us. What is the single most important one that we need to tackle?
I would say stu-, well, I know that growth is coming. I, I, I'm afraid about that. But I would say student engagement. And I looked up the stats, and I think figuring out, for example, if someone's not doing well because they have lack of resources at home, so maybe there's no parent engagement, or if they're not doing well because they're not being taught in there, they need to be taught. And maybe they need a new, a better IP, or they need more involvement, or they need to pull that out. And there are some issues, like my wife was a remediation, uh, teacher, which was a result of COVID in Hillsborough schools. She was there for math, and they pulled the student out during math to do math remediation. She was like, this just seems backwards. So there's things like that I hear, I'm like, I feel like you should probably address that in a certain way. Because if you pull them out to remediate math during math, while you're catching them up, they're just falling behind. And I didn't understand how that was, how that came to be.
Okay, welcome, and thank you for applying, showing interest in the schools. I'm Jane Allen Wilson, and briefly describe your involvement with public schools in Chatham County or elsewhere. What work have you already done that has prepared you for a position in the school board?
So as mentioned, at Hillberry Center, I've been their board trustee for two years now, while I currently. I've been their finance community for four years since I've been involved in finance. Then I was their philanthropist through philanthropy community prior to that. When I was at UNC, uh, every month through Rotary Act, me and, uh, usually two, eight, twelve of the people in Rotary went to the Boys and Girls Club in Durham and tutored. And I, I always tutored them, I was, I was a strong student. And then I have various family members in the schools in Chapel County and also in Chapel Hill, so I can get that feedback from my sisters and brothers who have kids as well.
I missed that last part, the first part of your sentence, sorry.
Oh, I have, uh, siblings with kids in Chapel County schools and Chapel Hill schools, so I get feedback from them.
And Mr. Fields, will you be able to make the commitment necessary to fulfill the duties of the school board member, time-wise, being able to be at meetings, those type of things?
Yes, I would be.
So you don't think your job or anything like that would keep you from that?
No, I, I just need internet for my job, I work fully remote.
All right, we've got a little more time. Is there anything else you would like the board to know about?
Um, not off the top of my head. I think, yeah, just, I think all toward our capable abilities is a matter of figuring out how they need to be taught. You can't use a boilerplate, which is fairly obvious, but I, I know a lot of interesting things coming into the, having been at Hillberry Center.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you guys. Our next candidate is Deborah Hiddle. And, um, Melissa, thank you so much for, uh, filling out the paperwork, being here tonight, being willing to be part of Chap County Schools, we appreciate that very much. So we'll give you about 35 minutes to tell us ourselves what you want to know, and then we'll have a question.
Okay, that's all right. All right, um, well, it's nice to meet everybody here, and thank you for your service. Um, did wanna say that I appreciate Melissa's service as well. I know that she had to step down, but I appreciate the time that she did spend on the board. So did wanna share that, especially after her departing speech. I know that this sometimes can be a very painful job, so I appreciate her service. Um, so my name is Deborah Hiddle, as you guys have seen, you guys have a copy of my resume, so you know a little bit more about me than most people. Um, I have actually been living in Chatham County as a resident for the last 12 years. Um, I have two children, one, um, who graduated in 2021 from Nor- Northwood High School during the major year of the pandemic. They were, she was out of school for most of the year. And then I also have a son who's currently attending Seaford High School as a self-warm. So, um, my children have been involved in Chatham County schools. They started at Perry Harrison, migrated over to Coller Middle School, and then of course, with my son right now, he's at Seaford. So we've been here for a while, I've had a lot of experience with the school. I've had a lot of interactions with the administration. Um, you know, they've all been very positive. I can't really say enough about the, the school district here. I think you guys have done a great job, because I think you guys, most of you, I think three of you, have been here for the last 12 years, serving on the board the whole time that my children have been in school. So I've worked a bit under leadership, so I do wanna thank you for that. Um, again, all of my interactions have been very positive. Uh, I'm very passionate about the kids in our community. I, I interact a lot with the sports within the community, and I've done a lot of volunteer work in and out of the schools. Um, one of the things that, that I'm, I'm also really passionate about is making sure that every student and every child has a chance. And, you know, from a personal standpoint, I can tell you that, um, for me, I was a bit of a troubled teenager, and I got into a lot of trouble. But I had a couple of, like, really good high school students that really believed in me. They believed in my ability to write, they believed in my ability to communicate, and actually gave me a future. And I, I wanna try to get that back to the community as well. So my sister is a school teacher in Florida. Unfortunately, I didn't get a lot of part work for this interview because she's been pretty devastated by the hurricane that recently came through. Her school's been shut down, and, um, they're not gonna be able to reopen until next week. She's, her house is underwater, so we've been dealing with a lot of personal challenges. Um, so we're trying to get her through that, so she can maybe improve that. Um, but one of the things I did wanna say, just to make sure that I express to you, is that I believe the schools are a community. And, um, I think like some of you, that when you build the community around the schools, I think it makes the community bond so much stronger. And I can tell you that the dichotomy between Chapel Hill schools, which we had a brief experience with when we moved down here in, um, 2009, versus the schools here. The schools here, the first thing I noticed when I moved to was the center of the community. Um, my children and I went to high school football games, and the first thing we went and noticed was that we had, you know, farmers from the community, we had parents, we had teachers, we had, you know, plumbers, we had electricians. We had everybody in the community that came out to watch those kids play football. And I know things have changed a lot since the pandemic happened, but that's one of the things that I really love about Chatham County. And I wanna make sure that I can be part of that with the schools and make, and, you know, we give everybody equal opportunity. Also too, I have noticed with academia, that, um, emphasis has been very, very strongly, um, pressed on, you know, making sure that our students are able to go directly to college. And I think that you need to make sure that there's, um, that we provide opportunities and pathways for all students. And you guys probably saw that in the letter that I, that I submitted to you. Um, their, your community is not just made up of, uh, four-year degree professionals. Communities are made up of plumbers and electricians, and most of these, these jobs are jobs that students can do directly out of high school. And I believe too, with the new infrastructure that's coming in, um, one of the things that I can do as an active member within the business community is we can work with these businesses like that, where to actually start investing for community colleges and seeing if there are opportunities for them to provide transportation from their community colleges to the high school. Like, there's just so many opportunities that I would really, really like to get involved in and embrace because I think every child in Chatham County is going to eventually be a future and a good member of this community. And I think that the foundation starts in schools.
Thank you. And I think you might have answered part of my first question, that's okay. Uh, to Paul, why do you want to be a school board member? And is there something in particular you want the board to accomplish?
Okay, um, so I want the board to accomplish equal opportunity for everybody. I do see that there is, um, I, I know that one of the things that I really appreciate is the one Chatham principles that you guys have basically established for the group. I believe in those principles. I also believe that we need to have a very diverse, um, workforce within the school district. And the reason why I say that is because Chatham County is made up of all different types of people. And as a past student, I know that those people that you see are gonna be your role models, you know, for the first several years of your life before you, you know, go out into the world and entering out onto your own, you know, venture. And so I'm very passionate about, one of the reasons why I would like to be part of the school board is I wanna make sure that everybody's voice is heard and that we give equal, um, attention to the janitors that work in our school, um, everybody that works. It takes a, a great group to, you know, to be part of a community. And as you guys can see from my resume too, I really believe in circuitued leadership. And not a lot of people know what circuitued leadership is. But it's when, you know, you as a manager and the people that you manage, you do what you can to make them successful. You know, whether it means that you take on a lot of their manual tasks, or you help them, or, you know, you pick things up, or, you know, you work with that, with, with the people within your school districts, you know, um, to, to make them better. And it's the same thing with the students too. I think that being in a position like this, you have an opportunity to basically be a servant of the community. And that's one of the things that I'm actually very passionate about.
Thank you.
Given the current makeup of the Board of Education, what would your particular set of skills bring to the table, and why are they important?
All right, so obviously with the influx of jobs that we've had out here, um, we can probably anticipate, I would say, between 10 to 20 new, new students that'll be entering the district once all these companies are even running in the next five to 10 years. I have a lot of experience with new builds. I mean, as you guys can see on my resume, um, I've done a lot of construction, um, worked on projects uh, for large pharmaceutical companies where we had to expand the site. And so I, I've got a very acute awareness of the challenges that come with that. And what people don't understand is that there's a lot of infrastructure challenges. And I'm sure Mr., Mr. Wise, I think he's in here. He probably understands that as well, right? Because it's not just the fact that you've gotta build a building, but there's also the services that are within the building. You know, you've got your cafeteria services, you've got your bus drivers, you've got your transportation. So there's a lot of logistical issues that have to be dealt with. And I've dealt with a lot of those in, in my current role and my previous roles within my, with my employers. And I think that I can definitely help with that. Also too, one of the things that I, that I'm really good at is, is, um, looking at some of the contracts that we have, maybe some longer-term contracts that we have with folks, and making sure that those contracts are solid. I think that one of the, um, items I can bring is from an operational perspective, I've actually done a lot of budget, um, oversight, and I can look at opportunities for us to save. Because if we can save on some of these contracts, then we can basically take that money and reallocate it to the places where it's needed the most. I mean, obviously, we've got, you know, challenges in Chatham County, we do have some aging infrastructure. Um, and if we can find ways to save money by challenging some of our existing contracts, or maybe combining services like, you know, financial payment systems and that type of thing. I think that there's a lot of opportunities for us to be able to save so that we can reallocate it and then maybe potentially, uh, reallocate that to the teachers as well.
I'm next. And you touched on several things here, and, and, um, my question, and, um, but what is the single most critical issue? We don't have this because we're doing such a good job. What's the single most critical issue facing the school system?
So I think the labor shortage issue is, is obviously a very critical issue. Um, and, you know, I'm acutely aware of that because it's not just happening in the school system, it's happening everywhere. Um, obviously, we've got, you know, bus driver shortage, so it's not just the teacher shortage, it's the shortage throughout. And I think that the biggest challenge that, that Chatham County Schools has right now is that with those existing challenges, there's also going to be a lot of them. And there's gonna be a lot of new students that move into town. And I think what we have to do is, in Chatham County, is we have to make sure that our, our pay is, is competitive, right? With Wake County, because if people can live in Chatham County and they can go be teachers in Wake County, they're gonna be paid a little bit more money. They can live in Chatham County and they can go to places like Orange County where the pay might be a little bit more, um, ideal for those, those people. So I think that as a community, one of the reasons why I feel like we should get more community involvement is because if you can understand and message that out to the community, then I think that they'll understand that in order for us to, um, build a better and stronger community, we have to have strong teachers, and we have to make sure that we hire the best and brightest.
And you're right, and they come back.
Well, thank you for applying, and we appreciate your interest in moving to schools. Um, and so, um, would you briefly describe your involvement with public schools in Chatham County or elsewhere? And what work have you already done that has prepared you for a position on the school board?
Well, in Chatham County, I've, um, I've volunteered for, you know, a lot of the things that parents volunteer for, obviously field trips. Um, I was a little bit busier when my children were younger, and I've been afforded a little bit more opportunity to do a little bit more volunteer work in the community. I've done a lot of volunteer work at the Chatham Food Shop to help out with PTA and some money. Um, spent a lot of time in concession stands because I have two children that are very athletic. Um, and so, and that's where a lot of my involvement has been, is back basically within the athletics of the community. And I think athletics are very important for, for children too. I know people say we should really be emphasizing, and I saw that in the last school board meeting, why aren't we spending more time, you know, rewarding students, um, that, that, that do athletics? And I think we do do that, but I also think that, that, um, sports actually provides a very, you know, for children, especially when you have very active children. I have a very active one, which is why I'm talking to the administration quite a bit, um, for my son. But, um, but yeah, so I, I do, I do believe that that's very important.
All right, last question. All right, last question. Will you be able to make the commitment necessary to fulfill the duties of the school board member?
Yes, I believe that I will. I'm a super avid reader, I do a lot of research. I make sure that I'm very educated before I make any decisions. I understand that, you know, I'm not, I don't have the past experience of an educator, but I'm a very quick learner and I tend to really dive into subjects that I may not be quite as familiar with. So I do believe that I can fulfill those responsibilities.
We've got a couple of minutes. Anything else you would like us to know?
I'm actually really shocked that we have a couple of minutes. Because I talk a lot and I talk very quickly, especially when I'm nervous.
Well, it's all right. You're all good, Mr. Vice, if we'll get a lot for you, then I'll write on it, so we're good.
All right, awesome. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. We appreciate that. Our next candidate is Dustin Miller. Let's fill out what we'll do, give you about 35 minutes to tell us about yourself and what you want us to know. And we'll have about five questions for you, and we'll be getting going, okay?
Cool.
Thank you.
For, I know a couple of people, I recognize a couple of them in the room, but for those of you who don't know me, my name's Dustin Miller. And I got to tell you, I'm a lot less nervous having to spend the last 20 minutes in that room because we're having a blast and every candidate in this room is worthy of the position. So kind of shakes the nerves off because I'm very happy with the candidate pool in that room. To dive into my application, I'm here, well, first of all, I wanted to make a connection to what I'm wearing tonight. My grandmother would tell me that if I didn't know what the dress code was to dress like I was going to church. And so I did that tonight and I'm sort of doing the same thing with what I'm here. I'm humbly going to say that I do not know the full scale of the role of the position. But I am coming here with my best foot forward, taking a look at your core values and the One Chatham document. And I think that what's still got me between your core values and mission statement and Chatham One was, I saw the word "all" several times mentioned. And so I think that that was intentional, I think that you put focus on the word "all" because that's sort of the core of what Chatham is aiming to do, is to be inclusive. And as an example, I've got two kids in North Chatham right now. I've got one that's going to start next year and I'm a, they're a product of that inclusivity through the dual language program. Just yesterday, we were having some work done on the house and my daughter facilitated where to put the windows to someone who was there working with us. And that was a sort of an eye-opening moment where there was a cultural divide that was crossed. There was also a language barrier that was crossed. And I was impressed with my daughter facilitating through Chatham Schools. I am a product of public education. I've got a lot of hate with public education because I was that kid that was inspired very early on by a lot of my teachers. And a lot of that message is dream and inspire. And I grew up in Almanz County and that dream and inspiration has took me out of Almanz County. And I've been able to be fortunate enough to travel and have a lot of varied experiences. But I'm conflicted because the ROI of that K-12 cost will never get absorbed in Almanz County school system because I live in Chatham County. And I think that if I were set out to do something to make an impact in Chatham County Schools, I would aim to try to close the gap between the co-op, between K-12, the community college system, the private sector. Because if we don't close that loop, then we are launching children into orbit and we might not see them come back into our space. And that dividend might not ever be realized, and I think that's important. And there's a lot of complexity there with affordable housing and development and things that were set in motion a long time ago by various leadership. And we're at a moment right now, we have to decide for Chatham, where do we want to go? What kind of community do we want to be in? And what investments are we going to make to allow teachers to live and work in the places they teach so that they can have that full impact? I want to reiterate again that while I've looked at these documents and glanced over them, I can tell that a lot of thought has been put into y'all's long-range plan and the goals that you've set, your mission statement, your core values. And if I were to be elected, I would spend a very significant portion of my time listening to you and trying to learn as much as I can. I don't come here with a directive or a tired kick. And as we've all had to do in post-COVID, all of us had to engage in restorative communication with family members and friends. And the elephant in the room is that we are post-COVID. And this has been a very difficult time. And I don't take it lightly that, and almost 9,000 children, that averages out to about 2,000 children per board member, that you had to consider week in, week out. And I'm, while we, I know that we won't agree on every issue, I think that I'm grateful that CDCF got kids in school earlier than most counties did. I'm grateful that the data was looked at and observed with respect to the various protocols. And I can't speak for anybody else but myself, but to say that being a parent in 2022 is challenging in ways that you can't really relate to people who've already been parents. It's a, it's a time when a lot of things are being thrown on the wall, a lot of things are coming at you at once. And the birth of the internet is coming into full bloom, the feeling of lack of autonomy and control as a parent. And I would just ask that this board consider that when they see the frustrations of parents in the room. It's not initially directed at one specific thing, it's just a lot of things coming at us at once. And it's hard to articulate and everybody sometimes wants a wall or a brick to smash or yell at. And so I just ask, I think that both parties, both sides, the parent organizations, the school board, we are here undoubtedly because we share the same values of caring for children. And I think if we could figure that out, I think that we would make a lot of headway, so that's what I got.
Thank you. All right, and you kind of got into this question, it's two-part question. Why do you want to be a school board member? And is there something in particular you want the board to accomplish?
Yeah, so to tag back on, I think that I'm also a product of a community college. I went to Almanz Community College for two years, transferred in. I'm proud to say I've never taken an SAT in my entire life. I've utilized the crack created through the North Carolina education system. And I came out the other side, a proud graduate of UNC Greensboro. And I think that, again, that to partner with the community colleges in ways that you're already doing, but with the private sector as well to say, how do we close the loop with 21st century learning objectives and business outcomes? Because if we, if we say to these children that they are, it's a college or post-album, which I don't think you're promoting, and we don't partner with our community to create those opportunities for them, then they're just as lost as they would have been if they had not attended, you know, public university or a public high school. We have a responsibility to close that loop.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Miller, given the current makeup of the Board of Education, what would your particular set of skills bring to the table and why are they important?
That sounds cheesy, but I am a, in my roles with various companies that I work with, both out of state and in-state, I consider myself to be a problem solver when it comes to interpersonal blockades, holding up progress. Most of the time when a deal goes south via real estate development or a product sourcing issue or a product that's not landing in the right distribution channel, it's usually because there are hot heads at the table. And so my job is to understand the nuance of that product or that service or that business model and then bring people to a consensus.
Sounds like, well, when you finished talking, I thought you basically answered all our questions. You zero in on this a little bit. We pride ourselves, I think, as a board to really tackle and take on the problems. There really aren't all that many, though. We, there are a few things facing us. There, I don't want to leave, there down to the single most important issue that's facing us right now.
Facing public education or our school system specifically?
Chatham County Schools.
I think that some of you who are sitting on this board, you know me in various capacities. I think that this county is a blue dot on a red map. And I think that prior to COVID, I think that parents' sentiment for political discourse was really sort of left out of the school board decision. I call it the C-span effect. We, it was locked away in the C-span gene. And after COVID, when parents were forced to become teachers overnight and quit their jobs and have to contend with policy, it, I think, put a magnifying glass on things and it, some things justified, some things not justified. So I think that, I think what the parents want is some assurance, I talk to many parents on both sides of the political spectrum, that they want assurances that school board leadership are acting apolitically. And I would say that the challenge of parents in those positions when they found themselves asking that question, they also should be acting apolitically as well when they represent themselves.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest in applying. It's exciting that there's so many people that are interested in schools and willing to donate their surplus. So could you briefly describe your involvement with public schools in Chatham County or elsewhere? And what work you have already done that has prepared you for a position on the school board?
So I'll start with, my most obvious experience was for a brief time, I was a lateral entry teacher at City Medicine Academy in Durham. And there I was, it was an interesting opportunity because I got to, it wasn't called Equity Training then, it was called Silent Rules. And I was, I was, what really impacted me was that it was facilitated internally. It was facilitated by the tech librarian who she's had, she'd been a staple in the school for many, many years. So there was buy-in because she was speaking from experience, she was leading, she was sort of walking, walking in her role, so to speak. So, and that was formative. I sort of did that because my wife, she was a teacher and she taught in Carver Schools. And I sort of, public education is something that because we all go through it, we think we're experts in it. And I had some interim time between projects and I thought, you know, I'm a lateral entry teacher, so I can at least speak to that. And that's the most pertinent experience. In terms of philanthropic, I've worked a lot with CDCF and helped facilitate some charitable giving and foundation marketing for other foundations in the community. On a policy level, I probably, one of my most proud sort of attributes is I feel like I know the county dynamics economically. I understand that, over ninety percent of teachers don't teach in Chatham. I understand that our tax base sort of restricts and limits what the school can really achieve. I understand that, you know, when a person from, when a person says that every school should be armed with two officers, they're writing a blank check, not realizing our county budget and not understanding our county dynamics. So I understand the 700-square-mile dilemma that is Chatham County, and I get it.
All right, last question. Will you be able to make the commitment necessary to fulfill the duties of the school board member, you know, based, I guess, daytime jobs without requiring you to be away and miss meetings or those type of things?
I work for myself and I consult, so I'm around. And to go back to the beginning, to the degree that I know the job, which is, I'm not, I'm going to say that I do not know the role that you currently serve in, in the capacity that you know that you serve in. But I'm willing to learn, I'm willing to listen. And to the degree that I know the position, I'm willing to fully commit to that role.
Got about another minute or anything else, Mr. Miller, you'd like to tell us?
To keep it light, next time you do this, maybe you should have music playing. And Go Hills, that's all I got.
For the rest of you being here while we're waiting now, y'all know how lucky we are to be sitting up here and looking at George back on the wall. He's just so calm and peaceful. And I keep looking at him saying, hey, he's chilling. He's, that's a neat picture and it's a calming picture. Not that we're under the gun right now, but I'm not singing, Jane, I'm trying to kill some time.
Our next candidate is Leslie Strong. Leslie Strong, we're going to give you about 35 minutes to tell us what you want us to know about you and then we'll ask about five questions of you, okay? Thank you for being here too.
Thank you. Good evening. It's an honor to be here to talk with you about why I'm a candidate, or why I am a candidate for the district one seat. candidate for the district one seat. I'm passionate about education. I think that there is nothing that a county can do to ensure that it's a thriving community and in the future. It's more important than investing in public education and making sure the system is strong. I grew up in Madison, Indiana, a little town on the United States border. I attended the public schools there. In seventh grade, I met this cute guy who was unpopular in America some years later. His dad was the principal for the junior high school, the superintendent of schools. Both my sister and his sister became public school teachers when they finished college. My mom became a substitute teacher when she retired. All of which is to say that education is something that's been really important in my family's story from the very beginning. It's also been important in terms of my career. So for over twenty-five years, I've worked as an attorney in higher education. First at Washington University in St. Louis, then at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and then at the University of Louisville. I was general counsel for UNC Chapel Hill for twelve years, from 2003 to 2015. Those were wonderfully challenging years and a lot of fun, most days. In my role as the university attorney, I sat at the table, shoulder to shoulder, every day with student affairs representatives, human resources experts, campus committees, budget officer, facilities officer, public relations personnel, accreditation team. We worked together with the cabinet, and we talked about the issues that were important to the university, all of which could be summed up in a new picture way as, you know, how do you provide students with education possible? And how do you do it in an environment that supports their learning and their personal development? So what that meant, Leslie, is that, you know, we're talking about policy. What should our policies be? How should they be implemented? How should they be communicated, sometimes was the most challenging piece? How are they really going to apply when it's the case? We have a lot of crises where we had to ordinate and talk about the response to that. And we spent a lot of time talking about all of the various constituencies who were interested in our work. And sometimes had conflicting views about having to proceed and how we balance those interests and be able to best place the end for moving forward. In addition to that, I served as the advisor, legal advisor to board trustees. So that meant I was at every board meeting, I presented at every board meeting, and I was in the room both for open session and closed session when I had the opportunity to hear how the questions they had, the deliberations that they undertook, and how they reached the decisions that they reached that they thought were in the best interest of the university. In all of those years, I saw a lot, I learned a lot. And so I think I have a good sense of how a board needs to function to be effective and support an institution, and I know how a board can complement the work of the administration. I am interested in this position because I think that my experience and my expertise allowed me to be an effective board member. I'm interested because I care about the education of the students in Chatham County, and I'm interested because I think this position really matters and can really make a difference, and I would like to be part of that. So I thank you for getting me the opportunity to meet you.
I think you're really there to answer your comments. You kind of got my first part of my question, which is fine. Why do you want to be a school board member? And I think you answered that pretty quickly there. Is there something in particular you want the board to accomplish?
You know, the priorities are vast. And I think that from, obviously, I'm glad you all have done, you do a fair deal about taking into the issues and developing good policies. The things that would be at the top of my list are always making sure we have a curriculum that is challenging for the students and that teaches them to bring out the best in school safety and security, of course, is a huge issue. When I was at UNC Chapel Hill, I sat on the emergency boarding committee. I was actually the chair of that committee, which was responsible for communicating to the entire campus community anytime there was a threat. As part of that, I sat in a lot of tabletop drills, active shooter drills, firewall hazard drills, you know, and it came to appreciate just how complicated those issues can be in terms of the anticipation and the planning and the training and the coordination of all kinds of agencies. Really being able to retain and hire high-quality and diverse faculty and staff is an important issue. Always focused on communication, how you communicate with various constituencies, and it's a two-way thing, and how do you listen to them, incorporate the comments, respond to them. Those are all issues that I want to work on, gather approach to growth, because this is one of the fastest growing, not even in the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Strong, thank you for answering my question also. But I'll ask you, given the current makeup of the Board of Education, what would your particular set of skills bring to the table and why are they important?
You know, I think what I would bring to the table is this experience and expertise that comes from my years in higher ed. When I look at Chatham County schools and I think about university campuses, they're both big organizations, they both have lots and lots of students, you know, close to thousand students. And also the issues that you all wrestle with are maybe not identical, but they're very similar to the issues that we wrestled with at universities that I've worked at. So I have a context and a perspective, you know, maybe an approach that I think might be at least helpful to the board in its deliberations. Thank you.
You touched on an issue that is my question. And that is, there's all kinds of things facing us. You also said we're doing a great job dealing with those. What is the single most critical thing that's facing our school system? Not a long way, it's just the most critical.
That, it's a good question. I would say it's always a hard question for me to answer because I think not a week at a time.
It's a lengthy question.
And then we give a week, one day is at the top of the list, and the next week, or maybe the next day, or maybe the next power, another thing comes to the top of the list, depending on the circumstances. So number one on my list would be making sure our students are safe and secure in this board. If I have to answer that. But I think all of the other things we've talked about are also as important and maybe today they'd be at the top of the list.
It's not an easy question.
Thank you for applying for your interest in serving in Chatham County. Would you briefly describe your involvement with public schools in Chatham County or elsewhere? And what work have you already done that has prepared you for a position on this board? I think you've already answered one of this, but in a specific context of public schools, K-12.
So K-12, the work that I've done most recently was in One Hundred and Twenty, where I lived until 2020, when we moved back here. And I was a tutor in a program that focused on students in the second and third grades. And the goal was to make sure that I knew that the third grade, they were reading at grade level. So these were students that were selected by their teachers, and we met with them in their school building and had a set curriculum. But for me, it was just tremendously meaningful work. We got to develop relationships with these young people and understand who lived their lives and understand the challenges that they faced. And one of the little girls that I tutored has dealt with things at the age of eight that I had never dealt with in my life. And yet she goes to school every day and is a good student and is secure and spine, and they, their perseverance and her courage are just remarkable. In terms of the Chatham County schools, I would say that I had not been involved in them since I came back in 2020. I can appreciate the benefits of having been there. I also think that it's not necessarily an essential requirement for being a board member. I've looked at the bios of each of you and have deep experience with the school system in many different capacities. And I know that it's possible to be, and if I'm a board member as part of a team, without bringing that particular personal experience to the table. You know, so we've talked about what I have to offer in terms of experience and education. And I would say that what I think you really want in a board member is somebody who's devoted to the mission, who is committed to doing the work, to understand the issues, give the homework, be informed, who can ask the right questions, who can absorb the information, can work collaboratively with their other board members, and develop cohesive relationships both within the board and help to maintain those between the board and administration. I think those are all the things that make a good board member, and I think that should bring those things to your attention.
My last question. Will you be able to make the common commitment necessary to fulfill the duties of a school board member?
So the answer to that is yes. I mean, the flip side of maybe Ms. Wilson's question is that I'm retired now. So my obligations at the moment are community obligations. You know, I work for a couple of food banks, I volunteer in other capacities, and I have lots of time. I am a hard worker. And, I mean, I can tell you that if I would end up being your appointed to the board, I will be all in. I will work tirelessly to team with you to advance the agenda for some of the students in Chatham.
Ms. Strong, we've got two or three more minutes. We've got about three minutes. Is there anything else you would like for us to know?
I've shared my story with you, so I appreciate meeting with all of you.
Thank you very much for coming out. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Come on in. How are you?
Good.
How are you doing? Do you want to, I'm just creating a seat right there. Our next candidate is Tim Winters. Ms. Winters will start off with, give you about forty-five minutes to tell yourself what you want us to know, and then we'll ask you about five questions.
Yeah. Yeah, so number one, thanks for having me tonight. I appreciate it. My name is Tim Winters. I'm forty-five years old, I'm a seventeen-year resident of Chatham County. My wife Patty and I are raising two kids who are currently enrolled in Chatham schools. We have a son at Margaret Pollard and a daughter at Chatham Road. And I work at a little construction manufacturing company down in Sanford, and there also for seventeen years. We've lived in the Mans Chapel area all that time, and, you know, I'm excited to be here. So thank you for having me.
All right. Two parts to my question. Why do you want to be a school board member? Is there something in particular you want the board to accomplish?
Yeah, so education has been very transformative to my life. And I grew up in a family of very modest means, and was able to leverage my education to provide a great life for my family. And I feel like there's an opportunity in this county to do the same for a lot of kids who are in similar situations, and help them, you know, build a great life for themselves so that they can transform their lives as well. So, you know, we've got a lot of disparity depending on what school you're looking at in terms of performance. A lot of great growth numbers out there, but proficiency sometimes, depending on the school that you're looking at, can lag behind other schools. And so I'd like to help, be part of the solution, to help those kids in those schools build a great life for themselves in the future.
Thank you.
Ms. Winters, given the current makeup of the Board of Education, what would your particular set of skills bring to the table and why are they important?
Well, I think one perspective that I would bring to the board that would be good would be that of a parent, someone who's got kids actively in the school district, and has a lot of runway in front of them still for many years, you know, before they graduate. So I think number one, that's an extremely important quality, I think, for whoever you choose, is to find somebody who's got that connection to the school district. Number two, I think my background educationally is in science, technology, engineering math. And I think, you know, my upbringing in a rural county, growing up on a farm, and being able to actually choose that path for myself to my own education, I think, would be valuable because I think, given a lot of the development news that we've had recently in the county, and I think there's going to be a lot of demand for those types of skills from our kids in the future, especially if we want them to stick around, right? And grow up here and live here in the future and stay good, so.
Chatham County schools has a few issues facing us, just a few. And so I don't want you to make that list for us, but pick out the single most important issue that we need to focus on.
I think probably the most important issue that the school board can and should be focusing on is probably reading proficiency by the third grade. The numbers and the data that I see indicate that, you know, reading proficiency at the third grade is very determinative in terms of what that student's future performance will be. And I think anything that the school board can do to help improve that for as many students as possible is going to only pay benefits for those kids in the future.
Thank you for being interested in serving the schools in this way. Would you briefly describe your involvement with public schools in Chatham County or elsewhere? And what work have you already done that has prepared you for a position in this board?
So I would, you know, so, you know, I had some interest in the role a couple of years ago when I ran in the 2020 election. And after that, I was lucky enough to apply and be accepted onto the board of the Chatham Education Foundation. So for the last two years, I've been involved with that organization, helping raise money for different initiatives within the school system. And I'll tell you, you know, it's been a two-year experience that I've had. Since then, it's been very rewarding. I've learned a lot about how important those additional funds are to the school system. But I'll tell you, the most fun and probably the most rewarding part of that was, you know, what I see happening with that organization around the Books on Break initiative, right, to give kids the opportunity to pick out, you know, different books, you know, maybe up to five or six, depending on the grade level, to take those home for the summer, to kind of help stem the summer reading slide that some of the kids go through when they're out of school for three months. So, you know, I'm not, I don't have ten years of experience supporting Chatham schools, right, you know, leading up to this moment, but, you know, after that...